Welcome to the February 28th, 2023, meeting of the New London Planning Board. Thanks for coming out on a snowy night and for navigating the streets and sidewalks. Just a quick heads up for everybody, we are recording on video, so just make that disclosure. Okay. So we have the Planning Board January 10th minutes. Does anybody have any issues with those corrections, additions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we have a pretty busy agenda tonight. We will start out with public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to make a comment about something that's not on tonight's agenda, could you raise your hand? Okay, great. Seeing none, we will move on to...
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Do you want me to do it? Yeah. So for the scenic road tree cutting for Eversource on Camp Sunup Road, if anyone is here for that, the arborist for the project reached out this afternoon and was coming up from Keene, and he asked if we could continue till the 28th so that he didn't have to drive since they weren't planning to take the trees down in the next three weeks anyways. So from the board, we're looking for a motion to continue the public hearing on the scenic road tree cutting until March 28th.
I move to continue.
Okay, great. Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So next up, we have the public hearing for the final site plan review for Twin Pines Housing Trust located at 268 County Road and County Road. Right. It's not coming up.
It's trying to load. Hold on just a minute.
Andrew, is that mic on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Can't see it from here. Looks like we're good on the monitors behind us. Hopefully that one will come to life at some point.
There we go.
Okay. I don't have the...
Pointer?
Who's he was it?
The pointer?
Yeah. The who's he was it to advance?
I'm not sure. It's in PDF, so it won't actually advance it because it's scroll, not slide, but you can use the pointer.
I need to pointer, and then I'm gonna nod if you...
Sure. Yep. For a hand signal.
High tech.
Right.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Andrew Winter. I'm Executive Director at Twin Pines Housing Trust. Delighted to be here today to present the final site plans for review and comment and edit over what I expect, you know, this month, next month as well, just to set expectations in the audience. So we are delighted to be here. Aaron Lambert is here from our engineering firm. Matt Giffen from our architectural firm. David Crandall, who lives here in town, he's the money guy, so watch out for him. I always say that. That's my joke about David. We love him dearly. He's here in town. And then Ken Viscarella, who's our legal counsel, who is a part-time resident here in New London. So you may be hearing from some or all of them. We definitely are going to hear from Aaron and Matt during the presentation tonight. So for those of you who've been at one of these meetings before, I see a number of familiar faces. I see some new faces. This may sound repetitive, but because it's a new hearing, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna be repetitive, just to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of information. So a little bit about Twin Pines Housing. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. We have a non, we have an appointed board of 15 individuals, a third of whom are low and moderate income residents of our properties, either in our homeownership portfolio or rental portfolio. Our offices are located in White River Junction, and we have 565 rental units across the Upper Valley. That includes, we also have 65 homeownership units, 10 of which are located in New Hampshire, 55 of which are in Vermont. And then we have approximately 180 homes in various stages of development. So we have recently just started construction on a project in White River Junction, 42 units, but also in that mix, obviously, of 180 is the planned 60-unit development that we're going to review tonight. So a little bit about Twin Pines. We are looking to develop roughly 7.6 acre parcel adjacent to the south side of the shopping center, owned by the Crescenti family. The plans call for 60 apartments in four buildings, each with 15 units, and storage space and laundry room. Combination of one and two bedrooms, 41 beds and 22 beds scattered across the four buildings. And then we are also looking at a future community room and small rental office in the barn in a future phase. There will be a resident manager who lives on site, and these units are aimed at households at between 60 and 80% of the area median income. That's AMI. You see it up there. That is the midpoint of income for the county in which New London sits, Merrimack County. So what does that actually mean in terms of who we're serving? If Adam would be so kind as to go to the next slide. Here are the 2022 HUD income limits for Merrimack County. We income qualify folks for this housing based on family size. So you can see on this slide here, folks at 60 and 80%, and what the sort of maximum incomes are for people who would qualify. So an individual making anywhere from 40 to, a household making anywhere from 40, 50, 60, 70, all the way up to $83,000 for a household of four, which would be obviously in the two-bedroom unit. So a range of incomes. I won't steal Tom Anion's thunder, but for those of you who remember what Tom said at one of our first hearings, about 285 positions, if I'm remembering correctly, of the 450 approximately positions at the hospital would income qualify for this housing, which again is part of the reason we're doing it. We think that there's a tremendous benefit to the community at large, but also to major employers like the hospital and the college for having this kind of housing that we're trying to create here. So happy to, happy to answer questions about that as we kind of go through the presentation today. So next slide is the current site plan. I'm gonna actually probably at this point turn it over to Matt and have him kind of talk a little bit about the site plan, the buildings, how they're located, and then we'll be going through in more detail the site plans, and Aaron will present that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Hello, everybody. Matt Giffen from Banwell Architects. So this is just pointing, right? You're doing the scrolling? Okay, got it. Just doing a test. Okay. Okay, so I'm here to talk about, a little bit about the site plan. I'll let Aaron get into the specific details of the site plan, but wanted to talk a little bit about the site plan and the buildings themselves, so figured we would start 30,000 feet up and kind of fall into the site. So here, we're looking down on the site. North is up, Hannafords and the shopping plazas to the north. The hospital is off to the east, and obviously the fields and other developments to the south and the west. The site, to enter the site, you would enter in through here. I know the board here probably can't see what I'm pointing at. The Crescenti house is here. The barn is right in there. If you can scroll to the next page, please. Yep, great. Yeah, sorry, I'm having a little hard time seeing it. So that's the barn structure there. So the idea would be, in talking with the civil engineer, understanding how traffic works, the entrance to the site would be directly across from the hospital. We've considered alternate locations to that, but ultimately it just gets a little dangerous with having offset driveways kind of entering and exiting through on busy roads. So what that does is that would require us to take down the house structure, and we would be able to maintain the barn. We have had a historic consultant come and analyze the buildings, and from a, just personally, but also what makes sense is the barn itself is just a very beautiful historic structure. So that is in the plans in what we're calling a Phase Two, to ultimately turn that into a community center, a rental office, a packaging office, and just a general community area for the folks living here. The four buildings are housing 41 beds and 22 beds. Each building will have 15 one-beds and five two-beds. They'll have a laundry room, a mailroom, an entry vestibule, a little exterior covered patio, some storage room for people. And these four different buildings are arranged strategically on the site, so they're oriented with the length of the building facing due south. So the goal for these buildings, Adam, if you want to scroll to the next page, the goal for these buildings is to meet passive house certification, which is a very strict energy standard, and when it comes to energy-efficient buildings, they're mostly entirely electric, and so in order to create electricity, we need sun. So with orienting due south, we have a lot of roof to put the solar on. And I understand that the town has guidelines prohibiting ground-mounted solar, so we're doing the best that we can to maximize the rooftop space. So like I said, we'll enter the site here. There would be a little bus, little bus vestibule here for people to jump on, advanced transit, or possibly even for the K-12 bus system, if you want to go to the next page. So this is at the far west of the site, looking east. So what we tried to do is, we really tried hard to create a community area in the site itself. So each one of these buildings has an exterior patio. Each patio faces towards the inside of the site, if you can go to the next slide. And then go to the next one, please. So I threw in some fun little kids and parents pointing at fun things, but really just wanting to try to create a community here, just create a space. If you can go to the next slide, I think that's where we show, oh, sorry, I guess we didn't get that one in there. But we're planning on an area for a pavilion, an area for a playground, so we, you can kind of see it right in there. Yep. Yep, so really the idea is just to try to create a focal point on the site to create this community. So, and I think we have got some elevations on the next slide. Great. So it's a two-story structure. Each level is 7,400 square feet for a total of 14,800 square feet. The building hasn't changed much since we last presented. The one change of note was the roof height. I had misunderstood the town's requirement of how you measure the roof height at 35 feet, so I had to change the roof pitch. So the buildings themselves got about eight feet shorter. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So here are the floor plans. So each, each main entrance will face the main drive corridor. So everyone will enter through this main entrance here, double vestibule. There'll be package room, storage, laundry room right in here. And then, so once you get into the site, it's, you have stairs on either side, and there's one and two bedrooms on both levels. If you can go to the next slide, please. Great. Any questions on the architecture? Yes?
You might want to point out accommodations for...
Mary Ann, don't forget to use your mic.
You might want to point out any accommodations for people who have difficulty...
Oh, sure. Yep. So the, these buildings don't have an elevator, however, the entire first floor will be, we call them ADA adaptable. So each building will have a fully ADA accessible unit. All other first-floor units will be considered Type A. So essentially what that is, it's almost a full ADA accessible unit, except your toilets, your clearances around the toilets won't be as big, for example, and you don't necessarily need the forward approach so your knees can fit underneath the sinks. But these cabinets will be designed so that they could be adaptable as well, so all you have to do is remove those front panels, and there can be, all of a sudden, your sink is a fully ADA accessible. Upstairs on Level 2, obviously doesn't make a whole lot of sense to make fully ADA accessible apartments when there's no elevators, but those will be designed to be Type B. So in the event that someone is on crutches or becomes less mobile in the meantime, they also have kind of increased features. So for example, all the doors will be 36 inches. You're not going to be struggling through 24-inch doors, 34, 36-inch high cabinets, and just generally speaking, the entire building will be designed around ease of movement. Okay, thank you. Aaron will come up to talk about the site plan.
All right. Good evening. My name is Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton. We are the site civil engineer on the project. We actually have two applications before you this evening, so I just wanted to start out with the lot line adjustment, so it sort of tees up the area that we're developing. So if you looked in the plan packet, it's actually on two sheets, but we are taking the existing lot line, which is right here, and we're adjusting it. Adam, if you go to the next slide, I'll zoom in on the area that we're talking about. So the area in blue that you see is the adjusted lot that we are looking to develop. So today, the green is the lot line between the 1.6 acre parcel that fronts on County Road, and this back portion is part of the larger contiguous piece of land. With the lot line adjustment we're requesting, the new lot line will run east-west. It basically runs along the zoning boundary, and what that does is it creates a 7.6 acre lot with 395 feet of frontage, and the remaining lot, which would then, which would stay lot 15, would become 34 acres, and it would have 1,281 feet of frontage. So like I said, it's a lot line adjustment. Both lots would still be conforming with your zoning. So that is a separate application from the site plan. I just wanted to walk through that briefly. Adam, next slide. All right. So many of you have seen the site plan before, but let me walk you through where we are today and explain some of the changes we've made. We think each iteration continues to improve upon the values and ideas that Twin Pines has challenged us to incorporate into Long Meadow Commons. So as Matt said, the new driveway will be across the street from the driveway to the hospital, and it comes into the site. It's two-way. On the north side, you'll see that small bus kiosk. We had, I'll talk about that in a second, sorry. So it's two-way traffic throughout the site. We've got, just for numbering purposes right now, Building 1, Building 2, Building 3, and Building 4. Each of those houses 15 apartments, and there are, there's ADA sidewalk accessibility throughout the property, so from the parking lots as well as out to County Road, and then also out to connect to the shopping plaza. You're seeing a site plan with 104 parking spaces, eight of which are ADA accessible. There's two in the parking lot by Building 1, one at the entrance to Building 2, one at the entrance to Building 3, two at the entrance to Building 4, and then two more near the barn that Matt was describing, which is being considered right now as a Phase 2. Should funding be available, that might be done at the same time, but the intention is to at least build the buildings and the parking lot and all the infrastructure we need to get people into the homes, and then hopefully in the near future to renovate the building, to create that community space, a package room, and so we would have additional ADA parking spaces at that community space. Throughout the site, there are a number of utilities. For example, there are two dumpster and recycling locations, one here between Building 4 and the community room, and one at the end of the parking lot between Building 2 and Building 3. One of the things that has evolved over time was we previously had a sort of a raceway. We had a circular driveway that was one-way, and it had a lovely green space in the center, which provided a lot of great opportunity, but it was creating a lot of additional impervious. And one of the things we've really strived to do is minimize the amount of impervious, minimize the footprint of the development, and that is reflected in a couple of the waivers that we have before the board. So that cul-de-sac has been eliminated, so it will be two-way traffic with the exception of one way coming into the parking lot and one way coming out. I'll show you the fire truck turning radiuses in a minute, but we've made sure that emergency vehicles, even the school bus, can circulate through the site. We understand that the school bus probably will not come onto private property, which is why, once we eliminated the cul-de-sac, we made sure that there was a place where children could stand and gather and not be subject to the rain or snow elements as much. So that is pretty much the site circulation. This is the area that Matt was talking about. We are proposing to build a pavilion and a playground. You'll see that everything is connected with sidewalks. They would all be ADA accessible. Some other features that you'll see on the site, actually, let's go to the next plan, if you don't mind. Oh, sorry, I forgot EV. Can you go back one more? I apologize. So one of the things we are planning for is future electric vehicle charging stations throughout the project. So you'll see there are four located on the site plan, which would accommodate eight cars. So there's a station in the parking lot by Building 1, there's a station in the parking lot between Buildings 2 and 3, one at Building 4, and then the other one is near the community building. We felt like that would be a good place for people to also be able to charge their vehicles. So those are incorporated into the project as well. Next slide, please. So this is the fire truck turning radius that I was talking about. So we've met with the fire department on multiple occasions, including at the department head's meeting, and shared these turning templates with them. But what this plan demonstrates is the fire truck, the largest fire apparatus in town, is able to make these movements. So even if cars are parked in the parking spaces, we won't be obstructing the path of any emergency vehicles that need to get into the site. One of the waivers we have is to reduce the parking space depth slash aisle, except right here, at the very end, we've kept that at the standard width. It allows just a little extra room for the emergency vehicle to be comfortable making that turning movement. Next slide, please. So one of the big things that we work on, obviously, is the stormwater. We're going from a site which is currently, you know, a former farm. It's a field, and now we're building impervious structures in the buildings and in the parking lot. So we've, we've basically tried to decentralize the stormwater. You won't see one gigantic pond holding stormwater on the site. So while I've highlighted them in blue, when you see these in the field, they're going to look like grass. So what we've done is we've taken the drip edge, we've put a drip edge around each building, so all of the water from the roof will fully infiltrate around the buildings. And then the parking lots, we have collected in small areas throughout the site, like I said, so you don't see one gigantic pond. So this is a series of what are called bio-retention swales in bio-retention areas. To us, they're going to look like sort of a low depression that's grass, but below that, it has well-draining soils that are designed to treat the stormwater before it infiltrates into the ground. So it does two things. It controls the stormwater, and in addition to that, it re-infiltrates into the ground to promote groundwater recharge. So here, you'll see we've added a pipe so that we can pull that away, keep this a nice lawn area for the residents to enjoy. But again, we have a series of bio-retention swales on the southeast corner of the property. The one that you'll see here, this one's actually going to be below ground. We weren't able to fit what we needed to there, so that's going to be below ground. Again, it will just look like a lawn, but below ground, there'll be some storage pipes, and it will go through what are called storm filters, and basically filter that water before it goes out into the closed drainage system in County Road. Because the project disturbs more than 100,000 square feet, this project requires a permit through DES, called an alteration of terrain permit. That application has been submitted. It went in on February 13th. So everything you see here, all of these stormwater practices and the way we modeled stormwater, is all in accordance with those state standards. Unfortunately, their queue is pretty long. It's about 80 to 90 days, so we won't be hearing back from them until likely end of April, but this is in their queue for review. And we were able to make all of those systems work per their requirements and their regulations. Does anyone have any questions on that before I move on? Sure?
I'm not a geologist, or whatever those people are called that deal with water. However, in our discussions in other situations, we talk about being able to handle like 50-year storms and 100-year storms and that sort of thing. Can you give us an idea of what your final capacity would be, or what your maximum handling ability would be?
Yep. So these are all designed for the 50-year storm and tested for the 100 to make sure that they would hold that water. Yep, that's a great question. And to build on that, these only work if they are maintained. So the New Hampshire DES requires us, as part of our application, to create an operation and maintenance plan, and we take that out of the application, and we give that to Twin Pines in a nice package. And that's their script for how to maintain these, and they are required to report back to the state on an annual basis. So that's the way that we ensure not only are they designed properly, built properly, and then maintained, so they continue to operate.
One more question, Aaron. In past meetings, I think you've talked about needing a pump to manage the drainage system. Is that still the case, and what would happen if we lost electricity?
Right. So the good news is the pump was for sewer, not stormwater.
Sorry.
Nope, no, no. And we have a solution that eliminated the pump and thus eliminated the need for a large generator for that pump. So I'll talk about that on the next slide. It's a great question.
Thank you.
All right. So the other utilities are shown here, and I apologize, they don't look great on that monitor. They're better on that one. Hopefully, people can see green versus blue. Green is sewer, water is blue. So our plan is to run both down the main driveway in parallel, about 10 feet apart. The water would connect to the main that runs north-south and County Road. We have submitted our application to the water precinct. We owe them a little more information. They gave us a request for information. We're resubmitting some information tomorrow, and then we are on the agenda to meet with the water precinct commissioners on Monday, March 6th. So it is a six-inch main. All the buildings will be fully sprinkled. In terms of sewer, we previously were looking to connect to the sewer main that is in County Road, just north of our property, almost at the intersection of the driveway, the rear driveway to the shopping plaza. That was going to require a pump because the sewer is very shallow. We have been working in collaboration with the hospital to come up with a plan that allows us to have a fully gravity system, which is preferred, so that we don't have, not only do we not have the expense of building and operating a pump station, we don't have the concerns about what happens if the power goes out. So we have been working diligently with the hospital. They have a sewer manhole located in the parking lot directly across from our entrance. And so we are, we've designed that. We are in the process of working with them to develop the necessary permissions to build it and enter into an easement to maintain that in the future. So that will be a full gravity system, no more pump. The other thing that will be underground within the site will be all the electric and telecom. As Matt mentioned, the solar panels will provide a great deal of the energy needed for these buildings, but we will have a small propane tank for the hot water. Is that right? Yeah, perfect. So we will, you'll see on the plans that there is a small buried propane tank at each of the buildings to provide energy for the hot water. We have done a lot of due diligence exploring generators. You know, that was a question that was raised and something we looked into. Certainly not needing a generator for the pump station has reduced that requirement. That absolutely needed one. So then we switched gears and said, what would it take for us to have generators for the buildings? Unfortunately, we're finding that that would be about $300,000 to $500,000 to put in generators for the buildings. It would be one large generator, the size of a bus, which we weren't really thrilled about how that would look. We also started to explore putting, you know, a single one at each building, but even those would be, would be rather large. We looked into, I spoke with Eversource.
If I can.
Sure.
Are you still considering maybe a generator for the community building when you work on the community?
It's a great question. Yep, absolutely. That is certainly something that we will, we can consider. Yeah. So we spoke with Eversource because one of the questions we had was, you know, what's the power reliability? And I got some information back from them, basically on outages on County Road, where our property would be located. Since 2016, there've been about, not about, since 2016, there have been 13 outages. They range from as little as less than five minutes to 10 to 20 minutes. Three were between an hour and two hours, and two were a little bit longer. They were 11, but none of them were longer than 12 hours, and that was a hurricane, I believe, in 2018, when they experienced that large power outage. So I think one thing that we're really happy about is the location of the development in terms of its proximity to the hospital and the shopping plaza. You know, there's a lot of infrastructure in the area, and so, you know, as evidenced by the track record over the past eight years, we... And so, you know, as evidenced by the track record over the past eight years, we expect the outages to be low and power to get restored quickly because there's so much density in this area. Let's see. That pretty much.
All right. Who's going to pay for the electrical upgrades necessary for the project? Is Eversource absorbing that, or do you have to pay for like new transformers, et cetera?
There'll be a transformer, but no other electrical upgrades. So, when we come off the line at the street, there'll be a transformer, and from there it goes underground. The project pays for all that. I believe they pay for the transformer as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, Adam. So, the other thing that's in your packet is a full landscape plan. Our landscape architect has designed these to be native species that do not require irrigation. So, that's another thing we wanted to mention. The water is strictly for the buildings. We're not proposing any water for irrigation. So, the plan, there's a detailed planting list that includes shrubs, trees, ground cover, perennials, grasses. Adam, if you want to go to the next slide. So, you'll see there's a detailed plan. There's a notation for each tree, shrub, planting. Go to the next one, Adam. So, what we've tried to do is provide, you know, a nice streetscape, but not one that also is going to take a lot of maintenance and/or water. So, all the size will be dressed up nicely with perennials and shrubs that are, you know, really relevant to our area. There are a number of street trees, both around the parking lot and the driveways, to provide a little bit of shade to the development. Next slide, please. The other thing that we're doing is providing site lighting. So, there are a number of site light poles that run from the driveway, along the driveway and the parking lots. We're supplementing that with some more pedestrian-scale bollards along the walkways. We want to make sure that everything is lit for safety, but not overly lit, and certainly not, everything is going to be downcast. Nothing will be lighting up the night sky. So, everything you see is designed to be fully cut off. The nice thing about these LED fixtures is they're very easy to control and make sure you don't have bright spots and dark spots. They have a lot of controllability, which also helps us direct them to the areas we want lit, parking lots and sidewalks, but away from a window and, you know, not trespassing off to the property. So, you can't see that here, but all those sort of pink numbers, those are the lighting levels. And what it does is it basically demonstrates that we're only lighting the parking lots and walkways, and as you move away from the buildings, you know, those drop down to zero, demonstrating that there won't be light cast off. And then, because the fixtures are downcast, they aren't lighting up the night sky, which is really important. Next slide, please. Sure?
Another question. You have two handicap parking spaces in Building 4.
Yes.
Can one of those handicap parking spaces be very flexible? So, if all of a sudden, in Building 2, we had two people that needed it, we could move one of those parking spaces over to Building 2?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, yes, so at Building 2 and Building 3, you always have, the parking space on the left is the van aisle, and then, excuse me, the van space, and then, there's an eight-foot-wide van aisle. So, the space next to it could always be designated with an ADA sign. It's not today. But certainly, if Twin Pines found that the community needed more, they could add that. That one would meet grading-wise. It already has the aisle that it can share. It would just need signage.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, we have a couple of waivers before you. One of them is for the number of parking spaces. So, these units, we have 41-bedroom and 22-bedroom units. Your ordinance requires two parking spaces per unit, which would require us to have 120 parking spaces. In our experience, the one-bedrooms don't require two cars, and even some of the two-bedrooms may not. We feel like some people are going to be walking to work or sharing vehicles. So, we're comfortable that one and a half parking spaces is enough for this community, and we'd really like to reduce the unnecessary impervious. So, we're asking for a waiver to have the parking space requirement be one and a half spaces, which would be 90. We actually have 109 spaces, and the reason for that is that we have eight that would be future EV parking spaces. And the thought is that we wouldn't, we want to make sure there are enough parking spaces for the residents. Somebody who parks to charge their vehicle, they would then move their vehicle to a permanent parking space and free that up for the next person to be able to use that. In addition, there are a number of ADA parking spaces. So, if you had a community that didn't need them, we want to make sure there's enough parking. So, we're trying to strike a balance in between providing enough parking, but not too much. So, that is our waiver request. Three of the spaces, I guess, would be deferred. They are located next to the barn. They would be constructed when the patio and those barn renovations took place. So, the housing development would initially build 106 parking spaces. Next slide, please. And the other waiver we requested was for the parking space dimensions in the aisles. So, your ordinance requires parking spaces to be 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep with a 24-foot aisle. So, we're asking for them to be nine feet wide and 18 feet deep. It's very similar to other ordinances in the area. Like I mentioned earlier, if you can picture the parking lot at the end, it's wider. It still has the wider aisle to allow, you know, emergency vehicles to circulate. So, we did double-check to make sure that by reducing the aisle width, we weren't in any way compromising circulation through the site. But other places, the aisles are going to be 24 feet. And I think that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one more question. Is that okay? How far away from the front door is the parking in Units 1 and 4? It appears as though it's pretty far.
Say that one more time?
How far away is the parking from the front door of Units 1 and 4?
So, the furthest parking space?
Well, maybe the closest and then the furthest, or smack in the middle. I want to get an idea of the scale.
I would have to measure that. I don't have that answer off the top of my hand. I can measure that when I step back.
That'd be good. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So, I'll summarize the comments and thoughts of the department heads. About, I think, three weeks ago, the department head sat down with the engineers for Twin Pines, and so, much of what you see today with the rework of the driveway entrance into the rear parking lot is a result of that conversation. So, a lot of their comments have already been addressed. So, they're appreciative of the bicycle storage under the awnings, the bus kiosk for students waiting to get on the school bus, and for the increased circulation in the parking lot between Building 2 and 3 that allows for, not only for a fire truck or an ambulance to pull up and respond, but then for the parking lot to still circulate while they are parked in the middle so that folks who are exiting the parking lot can still move on and not be in the way. As far as the waiver requests go, they were comfortable with the reduction in the size of the individual spots with, as Erin mentioned, the aisle width and the particular areas being the concern to maneuver their apparatus. So, thank you for addressing those from the, and I don't necessarily want to speak for the water department because I know we have two representatives here. So, I got an email from Rob Thorpe on Friday with an update that maybe there's more current, but at that point, they were still working out the peer review between Underwood and Twin Pines, and so, we're sort of waiting for that final result. Is that still the accurate?
We've not seen the plan.
Okay.
The commissioners, the plans I know would have dropped off, have been sent to our engineers.
Yep, okay.
But what you give, I did have a question for Erin.
Okay. Sure. Let me finish my part, and then Ken can ask those questions that work. And then, for the third-party traffic review that we requested at the last meeting, we have a draft of that from the engineer. We're sort of working through a couple of questions. We have a question that the police chief needs to weigh in on, and she's on vacation this week, so we don't have that answered for you this evening, but we're working on that. And the public works director is in correspondence with the sewer department's engineer to get that ball rolling on the third-party sewer review. I think that addresses, one other comment that we had brought up that the fire chief and I discussed was just this signage on the building for which units were where, and so, they're going to add that to the next round of site plan drafts so that when they come into the community, they clearly know which units fall in which building for responding. Other than that, I think that is all of the comment from the department head review. Before we get too deeply into the sort of public hearing side of things, we do need to decide as a board, or you need to decide as a board, whether or not you consider this a development of regional impact. So, just a reminder for that, then, that really just triggers some additional noticing between now and the meeting on March 28th, where we notice the surrounding communities and the regional planning commission. And the surrounding communities are welcome, I mean, obviously, anyone's welcome to attend our meetings, but they're invited to attend our meetings if they so choose. And then, if it were to be designated a development of regional impact, then the regional planning committee at the regional planning commission has the month between meetings to conduct a review and provide any input. The input they provide is not binding in any way. It is purely just, you know, a public input from the representatives of the regional planning commission communities.
Can I say something?
Adam, maybe it would be a good idea to give an example of a recent development that would have regional impact. Can you think of any in this area?
So, I believe, I think we actually designated the continuum project a development of regional impact, and I believe at that point, the conversation was over 100 units is what the board at that time felt was a large enough development to say that that was sort of regionally impactful. You know, the RSA is clearly written, however, it is a little bit wishy-washy in exactly what makes something a development of regional impact. I mean, obviously, it talks about, you know, noise trespass, light trespass, you know, different, if there is a shared waterway that the development is going to be on that transcends the boundary of a community. You know, so, there's environmental impacts, obviously, that can trigger that, but it's really a variety of reasons. And I wouldn't say we're necessarily bound to previous decisions of the board. I think that was the understanding and prerogative five years ago when that was before us, but it's been a little while.
Yeah, just, Adam, excuse me. My recollection, which is getting worse and worse, is in the discussion in the continuum thing, we also focused on the number of jobs that were going to be generated and the effect on other regions.
And so, to that extent, we just need a motion as to whether or not this is, and so, if it is, then those notification processes are triggered. If it's not, we just proceed as normal. I mean, we still proceed with the public hearing tonight, no matter what. It just, there's a little bit more work in noticing the next meeting.
Does anybody want to weigh in?
I don't think it is.
I don't feel it's of regional impact. I don't know if this is a discussion that we're...
I don't think I agree with you.
I do not feel it is a development of regional impact.
Anyone else? Neither do I.
Nor do I, Adam.
I don't feel it is basically a real estate project, not a lot of people coming to work there and doing that. Yeah, I agree. Anyone else on the board?
So, then, it's just somebody.
Okay, all we need is a motion then to say that we don't believe that this is a project of regional impact.
A move that this is not a project of regional impact.
Okay, great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Erin, may I have a regional, I have a procedural question.
Yep.
Since some of the study results are pending, can we really rule on this final review this evening?
I don't think that that's the anticipation of either the applicant or us to, sure.
Please, yes, address it, please.
I think we were hoping that we could have a conversation, present the plan today, continue the hearing at the end of this meeting, and then have you get the studies. I know the traffic study is, you know, well underway. The, I think the other study related to sewer, hopefully, we can get that going as well. I know Public Works is working on, no pun intended, getting that going, but the hope would be to have all of this available so that you could fully consider those studies in the context of making a final decision, you know, if you're comfortable, March 28th.
That's reassuring. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you want to give a quick update, Ken?
Ken?
Thanks. Can you do the mic just to be, yeah, it's easier for the recording? Thanks.
So, I have just a simple question. You're going to hear it again if you come to the precinct, but this board might want to hear it. When we initially spoke with you folks, there was conversation about whether or not there was water capacity available for this project. There was some discussion about if not, this would be premature as far as we would be concerned, and would wells be an option? And I wanted to know if what you showed today on your site plan would change at all if wells were required for domestic water?
So, the design would not change. I think one thing we would have to consider would be the fire suppression. We would have to look for an alternative way to store the water that's required and put in, you know, some kind of fire pump. So, that element wasn't considered and would need to be one of the benefits of being on municipal water is we have the, you know, the flow available for fires. But the layout wouldn't change. Nothing about the development would change. We don't have a septic system, so we don't have any concerns about well versus septic protective areas.
And so, Ken, that's part of what your engineers are working on now, is making that determination? Or, sorry?
I believe right now what we're looking at is water infrastructure and whether or not it's correctly laid out.
Okay.
I believe numbers were going to be calculated so we can make calculations to the amount of water required for this project.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify. So, the, architecturally, the only element that would change is the exterior patio roof. When you look at this, I don't want to get into the nerdy code part of architecture, but your building can only be as big as the materials that it's built with, as well as the sprinklers are in the building. So, likely, if we went to a well, we couldn't afford to do sprinklers because that would suddenly you would need fire pumps, and that would be cost prohibitive. So, I've designed that exterior patio roof to be sacrificial. That could get lopped off, and then, our building would be correctly sized. We haven't priced out the cost of going wells. My fear is that if we went wells, that would be a big problem for us just cost-wise because it's a pretty complicated, expensive thing. So, my biggest fear would be just the cost of that.
So, from the board, other questions that you have for the team presenting tonight? Okay, now, let's turn to the public. I know there are a lot of people here. If you can just come up to the mic, if you have a question, and please state your name, and also try to keep your comments brief if you could, and if you hear someone say something you were going to say, maybe just say that you would echo their comments or something like that. So, is there somebody from the public who would like to ask a question or comment on this?
My name is Bob Bowers. I am a resident. First, I want to thank Twin Pines for its extensive work and dedication in bringing to New London a project intended to expand available housing for the town's workers and... and those with the economic need for subs, for assistance in finding housing. This is a much-needed effort, and Twin Pines is to be commended for the care and attention it has given to this concern. I have prepared a memo, I have sent it in electronic form to Andrew Winter and to Adam for distribution. I have hard copies. It refers to giving you hard copies, which I will do if you want them. The point of this gets back to the sidewalks, which I raised with them earlier on and at the last meeting, and the board has, I believe, a copy of a memo. I also sent out, making a suggestion that if it was acceptable to the board, they might grant an easement to the town to put in the sidewalks at a later time if that was appropriate. The purpose of this memo is to point out that if there is no easement, I believe it is a safety issue, and I believe that it's a necessary thing to have sidewalks put on this property within its own borders. I realize there are complications. I've talked with Twin Pines on different occasions about it. The logic says sidewalk would be better on the other side of the road, but this planning board can only deal with a project in front of it. It cannot go to the hospital and say, you have to put in a sidewalk for Twin Pines. That leads to the conclusion on my part, and I hope on yours, that this needs to be taken care of. This planning board has a responsibility to look at projects, and this may be the first, and there may be more, that takes into account the safety concerns and needs of the town. The survey that the, the planning board sent out came back with question 23, showing that the number-one concern of people of this town was mobility, and that includes sidewalks. We need to look at sidewalks, we need to keep track of sidewalks, we need to be aware of the need for sidewalks. County road is a dangerous road. I understand that they've done some excellent work on putting sidewalks internal, they've done some excellent changes in putting a bus pagoda stop point. I commend everything they're doing, but I think there needs to be some attention paid to the need for sidewalks. In my memo, which you will have, I cite a number of instances throughout the planning board provisions, and in fact, a couple of references to statute that emphasize, emphasize strongly how important safety is in this board's review of projects. It comes up in all kinds of forms, not specifically related to sidewalks, but safety is a major issue the board needs to deal with. The primary one that seems to relate most here is Article 6F relating to parking, loading, and safety. In Item 2, it says, "There shall be adequate safety access to and from town and state streets to ensure the safety of vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles." Having a sidewalk that ends, unfortunately, where you go into the Chrisensys Shopping Center is not a beautiful thing to see, but it is the way you connect with the other part of that sidewalk behind that complex that leads then to the system of sidewalks that goes along Newport Road toward the post office within the property bounds of Chrisensys and connects across the roundabout with the public sidewalks that continue down Main Street and all the way into town. This project presumes, and I think rightly so, that people should have the ability to walk into town, they should have the ability to do shopping in town, they should have the ability to safely get back and forth. I think it's essential that this project, that this board require this project to put in sidewalks to handicap accessibility standards. The one suggestion I would back off on that with you, if they voluntarily said, all right, we understand that problem, we will give to you an easement now that says whatever the town concludes it's necessary, they don't have to come back and start all over from base one, and has the right to step in, that might satisfy the board that that concern has been addressed. But without that, I think this board should, and I think it's probably essential that it do so, that it require, say, sidewalks that are handicap accessible. And if you want these hard copies, I'll give them, but in today's world, maybe you don't want them.
I'll just take one, Bob, to add to the file, and then we, I did circulate it just before the meeting when you sent it to folks, so they at least have it in their email if they haven't seen it since 5:30, but...
No, I, I understand the board does not seen and read, read this, and I'm anticipating they would hope, I would hope they would do so.
And I'll just share too, that I have had conversations with the Public Works Director about the feasibility of the sidewalk in this vicinity. Thanks, Bob. And I think, you know, from town staff perspective, we are also supportive of that being a component of the site plan, at least in the, the parcel of, that's in question. The question then becomes that sort of missing middle between the end of the sidewalk behind the old colonial building and then to this property line. It's a slightly more difficult section with some open drainage and some drainage ditches and, you know, some more mature trees and things in there. It might take a little while to close that gap, but, you know, we did feel, to echo Bob's thoughts, that if we could at least get this section that was a little bit easier in now, we could hopefully address that sort of missing middle in coming years.
If you, if you continue that thought process, you have crosswalks on all of these places. You could have that crosswalk moved or have a second crosswalk at that location connecting with the sidewalk in front of Hubers. Just a thought, but I think it's important that this board keep in mind throughout its projects, and particularly today, this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
And I want to thank Andrew Winter for taking the time to talk with me about this, this subject. He was very polite and kind. Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, that makes sense. Andrew, did you want to talk about that at all, about sidewalks? Or do you want to, should we keep going? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't see.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to figure out, where exactly would this sidewalk be on the, on the property there? Where would it be? Would it just run down County Road? Okay, so is more, is more the issue, how do people get to town? Wouldn't they just walk across the street where, where the driveways are and go to the sidewalk on the other side?
There's not a sidewalk on the other side, though, Joe. The sidewalk, I think, on the other side goes to the north entrance of the hospital, Tom, is that, yep.
That's correct. So...
And is it the driveway there?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, well, actually, it won't, it won't let me point up there, so I'm going to point on the big screen over here, but there, there's an existing, so the sidewalk that ends is somewhere up around, maybe up here, and then, and then there's a sort of open loading area here to access the shopping center back in here. And then, as Adam mentioned, right at, right at this corner, there's kind of a, almost like a drainage ditch in there that would require quite a bit of work to, to make it safe, a safe route there. On the other side, the sidewalk comes to about this point, and, and the, the hospital's north entrance is there. And so what, what essentially is, is missing on this side is the area between the north entrance and the south entrance. And, you know, I, I, I think from, from our perspective, that is something, you know, we've heard from, from at least others in the community, is something that we would be happy to sit down with the hospital and sort of do some planning and kind of, and I will leave that to, to Tom Mannion to talk about, but I think we're happy to kind of be part of that conversation and figure out if there are sources of funding that might be available, at least insofar as between the north entrance and the south entrance that would allow for somebody coming out of Twin Pines' property to cross safely at a sidewalk, which you really want, from a planning perspective, to put, you know, adjacent to the driveways. People look for pedestrians crossing at driveways, so we want to kind of avoid a mid-block sidewalk or side crossing, sidewalk crossing there. But that would probably be the area that we would look at. That's something that I think we can, can, can talk about with, with the hospital. I don't know if, Tom, if you want to address that.
So, Tom Mannion, President and CEO of New London Hospital. So a couple of things. I, I think that, I, I won't go into the details of the Dartmouth Health System and capital projects at the moment, but there are constraints, I'll put it that way. And so we are, we will have to have conversations around funding sources, for sure. However, that said, I, you know, from a safety and logistical standpoint, we are more than open to doing what makes sense for the town of New London, and this is a great project. We want to be a partner with the town, with Twin Pines, to do what we can. We'll have to talk through maintenance and everything else, but ultimately, I know this, for the sake of this conversation, it's related to this project, but we are open for a conversation to doing what makes sense.
Thanks, Tom. Do you want to go?
Steve Allenby, and I'm a New London resident. I agree with all of this sidewalk talk. The issue for me is, where do the money come from? And this has been a very expensive project for us, for, for Twin Pines and for the community, and it's not a deep pocket that you can just keep saying, give me more, give me more. And I guess my question goes to, the state put together a program where the town could get up to $600,000 from the state for workforce development. And my question is, could some of that money be used for this? And what's the status of the town applying for that $600,000, and where might it be put?
So it's hard to say that yes, I mean, a project like that would qualify. However, it's a competitive program.
Yep.
I think you have to be through the whole application process before you can apply, is my understanding. I don't think you can apply for a project that doesn't have approvals yet. Is that also your understanding, Andrew? So it's somewhat hard to say, you know, that yes, the town could use that $10,000 per unit that's potentially available. There's no guarantee that you get the total $10,000 per unit, I don't believe.
Right. I mean, I, I think, my understanding is that grant program, which is through Invest New Hampshire, makes up to $10,000 per unit of permitted workforce housing. So you really can't apply until this, this project is through the permits, you know, March, April, whenever we get through that. So at that point, that may be something to pursue. And again, you know, the nice thing is, that's a relatively short stretch, and while there, there's a potential fire hydrant, is the fire hydrant in that stretch? So the fire hydrant might need to be relocated. Unfortunately, there's some really nice trees that, that might be impacted, or at least one of which might be impacted in, on that other side of the street, but it's a relatively short stretch, and so thinking about, you know, even if you were able to get, you know, something less than $600,000, that might be something to put on the list of projects where the funds could go.
So my question is, is anybody, who would, who would make this application, Adam, for the town? Would it be you or some other department, or?
So we've had that conversation with, we, the housing consultant that we had hired through the New London Housing Commission, he does have some experience in applying for a very similar grant program. And so we had conversations with him about potentially utilizing his services if it gets to that point, but it would be some representation of the town applying for that.
Because if, if we get the final permit, say, in March, the end of March, it'd be great if it could be teed up and ready to go, especially if it's competitive, and the sooner we get it in, the better.
I'm not, I'm not sure that it's only your final planning board permits, though. I think it's your building permits, and I thought it was fully permitted, but...
Go ahead.
I'm done. Thanks.
It's a great question. Unfortunately, I'm not an expert on it. It's a municipal program, so I, I have not committed all the program details to memory. But if I, what I do recall is that it may require our AOT permit, so that might be in April, April, May. So that may be the marker at which point. I think you can have everything but the building permit, I believe, because that's considered, you know, frankly, somewhat more administrative, but that would need to be confirmed.
Right. Other members of the public who would like to comment? Okay, quiet group. What about the planning board? Anyone else have questions, concerns?
No.
Okay, so we need to...
So then we would, if, if folks are ready, then you would vote to continue to the next meeting, which is one month from tonight, March 28th.
Does it need a motion?
Yes, so you do need two motions, one for the, the lot line adjustment, and one for the, the actual site plan review application.
I move to continue to the 28th for both the lot line adjustment and the final site plan application.
Have a second, Mary Ann? Okay, thanks. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Drive carefully.
Thanks, everybody, yeah. Safe travels. Okay, thank you for the pause there while we move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a final site plan review for Jeff and Caitlin Daly. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate you emptying out the house before we started. Okay. Yep, we're gonna, if you guys, no, thank you, that's, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm Jeff Daly, my wife Katie in the back here. I grew up in town. We live at 65 Castle Lane, and we are looking to do a small home business. It's going to be a product called Ceracoat, which is like a ceramic-based coating that you can put on metal, wood, the water bottle there is, it's a product called Ceracoat. We're looking to do that right out of the house, so we're going to ask to use about 216 square feet or a 12 by 18-foot area in our basement. And that space is going to be used to house a small tabletop spray booth, because you apply it with a air compressor. So it'll house the spray booth, air filtration, a convection oven to bake the product on, and then an insulated cabinet that goes in a closet for the air compressor, just so it doesn't make any noise, so nobody's bothered by it. We're going to mainly use this product on firearms, for restoring antique firearms, kind of family heirlooms, things like that. As a, my full-time job as a police officer in the town of New London, are duty guns. Any gun that you're drawing a lot, it wears that factory finish off, and then anytime you have metal that exposes to the elements, it starts to rust and break down. So even newer guns, it's a pretty useful thing. Part of the process, once I get approved here, if I get approved... the process, once I get approved here, if I get approved, I would have to get a license through the ATF to be able to have gun parts shipped in, because I'm looking to do it mostly through the mail, just to not have any additional traffic on the road. So, yeah, that's basically what we're looking for. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
You mentioned a spray booth. Are there any fumes, like VOCs, that would be created? And what would you do to handle the dispersal of those?
So, the spray booth itself has filters in it to capture anything. So, there is a vent that will go outside through that. So, I don't know the exact amount of any product that'll get out, but it's all filtered. So, it's my understanding that the air that's leaving is mainly just a vacuum, so that it doesn't go back into the building. But all the product and stuff will be caught by the filters.
And what product, what items or materials or whatever will be caught by the filters?
The Ceracoat product itself. It's a liquid that you apply with like an air spray gun, just like if you were painting a car.
Other questions from the board?
Where is Castle Lane?
I'm sorry?
Where is Castle Lane?
It's off of King Hill Road.
Okay.
So, if you go to the end of Bog Road and King Hill Road,
Yeah.
and take a left,
Yeah.
go up the hill, Maple Lane's on your right,
Right.
and then you make a sharp right-hand corner,
Yeah.
Castle Lane is immediately on your left.
Okay. Thanks.
So, my question is, does this mean we won't have to replace the firearms in New London as frequently?
No, it does not. I'm not gonna, yeah, it's, I don't think, I wouldn't be, I would have a hard time, and I'd have to meet with the selectmen and everything to discuss me being a town employee, but then also doing a service for the town's products. I'm not sure how that would work.
Well, if we save money, it would work fine.
Well, then, no, we won't save money. Yes.
Two questions.
Sure.
Is there any hazardous material in this?
No.
Is there any, do you have to dispose of anything?
No.
Okay. And secondly, I assume from what you're saying, that once they're coated with this ceramic, the firearms or whatever is coated with it can be used?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, they have a bunch of different finishes. Ceracoat is a company itself, and they offer a number of different finishes based on what the end result is. So, they have ones that are meant for, like exhaust systems on cars, that are just really, really meant for high temperature. They have ones that are meant, they add like a lubrication film, so even like different specific parts, you would want to use different products for. But yeah, you bake them on or air dry them, and then once it's baked on, they're used for anything, and they're very, very durable at that point.
There's nothing on its packaging or anything that indicates that it's a dangerous material or anything?
No, nope.
Once you spray this material onto the item, your coating, does it require being baked in an oven, in a high temp oven? And what do you need to do to protect the surrounding interior from that high temperature?
So, depending on the product you're using, some are just air dry. Others do have to get baked on. And the ovens that they recommend for them are just standard convection ovens. So, if it's a small enough item, just a regular convection oven that you can get from any sort of local, like a Walmart, or I would suspect-
A new use for air fryers, huh?
What's that?
A new use for air fry-
Potentially, yep, yep. And the temperatures that you're baking them on at is around 400 degrees, so it's nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there, oh, Paul, go ahead.
Do you, do you plan to put some kind of a sign outside your house?
No, I do not.
You do not?
No, no. And really, the only reason that it's a home business, I'm hoping to do all of this, or most of this, through the mail. But just the occasional, if it's a local resident, and they don't want to mail anything, to stop by, it'll all be by appointment only. I'm certainly not looking to add to, I love the fact that we live on a dead-end road, and there's really no traffic, and I'm not looking to change that at all.
Fair enough. Are there any questions from the board? What up, the public, anyone? Okay. Yeah, questions from the home. Okay, great. Is there a motion on this application? I'm sorry, we have to do finding of facts. I apologize.
That's okay. So, the three facts that will allow you to grant approval, the business will take place entirely indoors, as required by the home business regulations. The business will only occupy approximately 216 square feet, which is well below the threshold of the ratio required by the ordinance, and that the business does provide adequate parking should a customer choose to come in person to pick up their merchandise.
Yep. Thanks, Adam. Sorry about that.
That's good.
So, is there a motion from the board?
Second.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed, or staying? Okay, great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
I need to recuse myself.
Yep. So, we have a conceptual that we were gonna talk about, that involves our friend Jeremy, so he will recuse himself for this one.
Do you want to start with the animation, Jeremy? Sure. So, I am here representing a potential buyer of 331 Main Street, and what you're seeing is a conceptual animation of what they are intending to build, which is basically a food court building.
Can we just say, sorry, Jeremy, 331 Main, so everyone's aware, is where the red building was next to the inn?
Correct. Bar Harbor's-
Bar Harbor's, that they tore down. Yes, correct. Just so you can place where we're talking about.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
So, the idea behind the building is that there will be small food vendors, somewhere between five and six small food vendors, a small vending area, and basically what would be public gathered seating. So, not restaurant-style, per se, but you would go to one of the stalls or the vendors, take your food, and there would be both, you know, sort of two-person high tops, or larger areas for, you know, family-style seating. In general, when we flip to the site plans, we'll be able to see this. It's both lots. So, it's the parking lot that was behind the Red Barn building as well, which is basically what the rendering is now showing you. It would be the redesigned parking lot. So, we're here tonight as conceptual, just to get the board's general feeling and ideas for what is intended here. We have done, Greg Reznick, our landscape architect, is here as well. Basically, we have done preliminary work. We do not have a civil engineer on board yet. The intent is to sort of get a temperature check from the planning board before closing on the property and moving forward with a full site plan application. Just in general, going through it, it's the two lots. So, basically, it's spanning all the way from Main Street back towards Gould. The building right now conforms to, or the proposed building, conforms to all of New London's setbacks, both front, side, and obviously rear. I will go through the parking numbers in a little more detail, but we're able to actually meet the parking requirements without waiver. The site does allow emergency vehicles through, and currently, we're proposing two entrances to the property, which would be across the backside of the Bar Harbor Bank that exists now, and Gould as well. Again, this is conceptual. We'd want to take a look at that in more depth, but we do feel that access to the site from Pleasant is much more convenient than Gould. So, we would like to maintain that. We would be closing off the curb cut on Main Street. The town would be picking up another parking space, which is where the curb cut is now. If you go to the renderings, I think it might be a little bit, oh, yeah, I guess you'll have to zoom in. It might be a little bit easier to understand. So, we've taken the 30-foot setback, and we've really created an outdoor space. So, part of it is, has a, drawing a blank, an arbor. Over it, the other part is much more open. We stepped back a portion of the building, so that we would have that open space. And this really brings up, and that's probably the perfect one to see it. This really brings up the biggest question that we had in sort of designing this, is that the old building that was there, the old Bar Harbor building, was not that far back. So, it was a pre-existing non-conforming. But in meeting the 30-foot setback, we are now way behind the two adjacent buildings, being the inn and the Bar Harbor Bank building. So, this is a conforming application. And speaking with Adam, the zoning ordinance allows us to pull the building forward, which would not be in the 30-foot. So, we are able to meet the zoning ordinance. We would not need a variance, but if we pulled the building forward to engage the street more, which is a lot of what we talked about in our master planning process, we could sort of squeeze down some of those outdoor spaces, which we can't put seating in anyway, because we don't have the parking to support that. But we would really bring the building faces back to the road where they were, but it would require the open space be reduced. So, that would require a waiver from the board. So, that would be one thing that would be great to have some feedback from the board on tonight, is whether or not everybody would be more comfortable meeting the 30-foot open space, which is this, or pulling the building forward as we, as the old building was, and then potentially granting a waiver, which would actually also allow us to increase parking in the back. So, we'd be able to add even more parking to what we're able to meet by waiver at this point in time.
I have a question.
I think, just to go through the building floor plans really quick, the first floor, keep scrolling, sorry. There you go. So, the building piece that's on the first floor, we've separated the first floor into two separate components, which actually allows for a courtyard, tables in nice weather, not tonight. Could be brought out in between, so you could take the tables out into the open, you could spread the space out. If we're able to pick up more parking, we would also be able to add more general seating outdoors, which would be nice as well. But you can see that there's one, two, three, four food vendors on the first floor. The idea is that they're, they're small spaces. So, typically, it's one person, maybe two people running this. There are examples all over the place. Bow Market in Somerville is one. So, there is a lot of examples of these food court buildings around the country, and in New England as well. But the idea is, you walk up, you get your food, and then you go back out to sort of what's a general seating amongst all of them. The client has already spoken to several people. One is interested in sushi, another is interested in pho, ramen, a small pizza place. But the idea is, is that if somebody comes in, and you know, they give it a go, and it's not popular, it's very easy to turn that space over, and it flips to a different vendor. It's not like a full restaurant where there's staffed up with 10, 12, 14 people. This is typically one or two people. And if you just pan down a little bit, the concept for the other side is that on the green space, there's an open stage where entertainment could be provided. That's a little vague, whether it would be scheduled or impromptu. And then the portion behind is actually a vending area, and we'll see this, but don't think like hospital vending. The idea is that in New London, you know, once at 7:00, when Dunkin' closes, you can't get a coffee anywhere. The idea would be more of like a Starbucks gourmet vendor coffee machine, actually, believe it or not, pizza vending machines, ice cream vending, a lot of high-end vending machines that would be in that space. And that space would be open 24 hours, under security surveillance. And even, it was offered that if the police department was interested, it could be directly fed into the police department. But typically, those spaces are left open 24 hours. They have some small interior seating, so that, you know, if it's 4:00 in the morning, and somebody's out plowing, they can stop, take 15 minutes, sit down, have a coffee, have a bite, and head back out, as, you know, any other services that work non-typical hours. The second floor, if we pan down, has three spaces, and in a large loft looking down. So, the idea is that you're really engaging both levels together on the interior side. The bridge that connects them is all high-top tables, that would have power sources, USB, Wi-Fi, so that, you know, you grab your laptop, you go, you spend your lunch there, have some food, people watch. And then if we scroll down even further, there are four pop-up retail spaces there, and an outdoor deck. And all of these spaces are intended to intermingle. So, you know, you could be downstairs, and maybe there's a cookie shop, you grab a couple cookies and a cup of coffee, wander around to the pop-up retail, go out, sit on the deck, have a coffee, do a little more people watching. I think if you scroll down, you'll see the different vending machines. So, there's a high-end Starbucks. There's basically, it is a vending machine, but it's basically a self-serve vending machine. Keep scrolling down, and I think there's maybe three or four more. That's actually ramen in 43 seconds. Keep scrolling. High-end ice cream, and the last one is actually pizza. It makes a pizza, and I think four minutes. And all the ingredients are fresh. They're actually not frozen. So, those need to be maintained and kept with fresh ingredients every 48 hours. So, the idea would be, is that maybe one of the vendors that's in one of the pop-up shops is also maintaining some of the vending machines as well. So, that was a lot of info. I'll stop, and I'll let the questions roll.
Okay, so, I'm walking out of the library, and walking towards downtown, to Town Hall, but I'm staying on the Woodcreek side of the street. From an aesthetic point of view, what do you think looks better? All things, all the buildings straight in a row, or your setbacks, so you have people mingling in the front, so the town looks a little more openness? That's my thoughts.
We can do both.
I know you can do both, but what do you think is, from an artistic point of view, looks better?
I would pull the building forward from where it is now. So, this is a conforming location, according to our site plan review. We're 30 feet back. So, we're required to have 30 feet open space. We can pull it all the way forward. I wouldn't pull it as far forward as the bank. The bank is literally on the property line. But the inn is a better idea. The inn has, or a better example, it has a fairly large vegetated area, then it has its porch. So, if this building were to line up with the building part of the inn, you would probably have 15 to 20 feet of space there to the sidewalk, where you could actually have more tables, more open space, and you would have that engaging area.
Look better if it's set back to 30 feet?
I think that would look better than setting it back 30 feet, yes. I think if you set this back 30 feet, it's, when you're, when you're very far up or down Main Street, and you're looking, it's gonna look like a hole. It's, actually, it's gonna look just like it doesn't have-
Like a gap-tooth thing, Joe. Like, you know, and then you get, they call it the street wall, like you have the-
Well, I know. That's why I think it's better to have it back at 30 feet, so there's people mingling in front.
Well, I actually, I think it's the opposite. So, you've the inn, and then you have kind of continued space, and then you have the bank, so that you don't have this weird missing tooth. If you, if it sits back too far, it kind of just, it disappears, I think is what he's saying.
We have, right now, we have much more space between the building and the sidewalk than we need. So, I would, a better design would be to bring it forward and line it up with the inn, still having outdoor space where people can mingle and interact. The other thing is, is this isn't one big building facade. It's two shorter buildings, and they're actually staggered. So, by bringing what we have now forward, you'll still have some relief, and you'll have outdoor space. You'll have a narrower space towards the bank, which lines up with how close the bank is to the sidewalk. And then the other building has stepped back a little bit, but there's actually a courtyard between the two of them.
Okay, thanks.
Jeremy, what about the bank's parking? I mean, that was their parking lot, so-
Yes.
They're not gonna be left with much.
So, Adam and I have a lot of questions about that, because we don't know if the bank building was using, legally using, the parking that's there. What we've done is, we've accounted for three spaces for the bank in the total parking count of the parking we're proposing. But it isn't, it isn't enough that it would make the bank illegally, or planning board conforming parking count. But it isn't now, anyway, because there's only six spots in the back. So, right now, on the bank's property, the actual physical bank that's there, So right now, on the bank's property, the actual physical bank that's there, there are only six parking spaces behind it. So it's probably not conforming. And then by us proposing to bring the, the road through there, we lost three spaces, but we moved to the three, which would then have to be deeded to the bank, so that way they still maintain their same count. Adam brought up whether or not they have a deed amongst themselves, I guess it would be, from one property to the other.
They may not have it, given that they're all under common ownership now, and I think we're all under common ownership under the previous owner, or however it was set up anyways. But what we need to figure out is if there was ever a site plan done on the bank building that specifically reserved any of these spaces, because obviously the six spaces it had in the back or has in the back don't equate to what a building of that size would require by our regulations. So if it has gone through site plan review, there's a possibility that they said, you know, 15 spaces or whatever the magic number was in the space behind the red building was sort of dedicated to that. So we need to do some digging in the town files. I'm doubtful that that's ever even gone through site plan review, but...
I don't think it has. But I do have the deed for our building behind there. And it, it does address parking, but I can't remember exactly where it says our parking started and the bank's ended. So I'll, I'll dig that up. That might, that might be helpful.
So the, the driveway access is all on the bank land, not on the adjacent land? That's the property that just sold that you're talking about? Yeah.
Who owns the parking lot?
So are you planning on getting any easement to do the driveway then?
It would be, yes.
For the bank?
Yep. So we have a couple of questions, so... Bar Harbor owns the, what we're showing is the parking area, which is a parking lot now.
Okay. They own that all the way over to Gould Road.
Yes.
Okay.
Paul, you have a question? Did you want to go?
Jeremy, go.
Yeah.
Is, is this considered to be a seasonal business? I mean...
Only the outdoor seating would be seasonal.
I'm sorry?
Only the outdoor, when, when you move the seating outdoors, it would be seasonal. The buil, the building is a closed building.
Oh, it is? Okay, because the picture...
We have all the, we have all the doors open in the renderings because it looks better.
I was just going to say, you know, Jeremy and I talked a little bit earlier today and I shared some of my concerns with the, the access point here and delineating properly between the small former Kitter building that Christian Giangeli has recently purchased to use in, in a similar manner with two tenants. But, you know, the asphalt from that parcel sort of spills right into this one, and so creating some sort of definition or shared driveway scenario there. You know, there's work to be done. As Jeremy said, there's not an engineer on board yet, so those things are, are maybe just premature conversations at this point that haven't been totally fleshed out. You know, I do think there's some sensitivity to the fact that, you know, Gould Road is really primarily a residential neighborhood that, especially in the last two years, has seen their traffic change pretty dramatically with the, the school using it now as their sort of queuing up spot for pickups and drop-offs. And so I think we want to be sensitive to that, to, you know, make sure that we're not sort of compounding that problem, but also so that on, you know, a nice afternoon in September or October, when this could be, you know, a relatively busy establishment and school is in session and picking kids up, that, you know, the entire parking lot isn't log-jammed because we have parents backed up up Gould Road waiting to get into the school to pick up their kids. So obviously, we have some things to work out there. As far as the alignment, you know, I just want to go into a little bit of particular there on what Jeremy was mentioning. You know, this is really the one part of our ordinance that is sort of form-based that says, you know, the, the commercial setback in the front yard is 30 feet, but you can go less than 30 feet if the two adjacent parcels have buildings that go there. So, I mean, I guess we'll leave that up to, to you to sort of, as the designer, figure out, you know, what you think is the best layout. Obviously, we have input here, but, you know, you can go up to that sort of averaged of, between the two.
I think it would be good to get a little bit of feedback from the board if we can tonight on sort of the preference there because it, it would require a waiver to move, a waiver from the site plan to move the building forward because we, we would be reducing the 30-foot landscape setback or open space setback, but we would be able to increase parking. So there's a, you know, there's sort of a trade-off there that would be good, beneficial.
And can you, can you reiterate, Jeremy, just the, I think what's important for the setback, you know, like you just said, if you move the building forward so it doesn't seem so like a missing tooth with the other buildings, you also have the ability there for outdoor seating. Whereas if you don't have that moved forward, you don't have the parking, which means you have a big courtyard that nobody can sit in, you just have to walk through to get to the back. Whereas if you had a smaller courtyard, you actually have it be more active and lively to Joe's point about...
Right.
Walking down the street and seeing people having a coffee or whatever.
So some of our first iterations that we went through with the client are renderings. If, I think if you go to one of the renderings and sort of zoom in on the, on the front, on the street side, Adam, it'll, it'll help. Yeah, probably that aerial one. So what you really see is a large grass space because we don't have the parking to support putting picnic tables out there. And then on the street side, we don't have the parking to support putting benches on the street because those will count towards required parking, you know. And I had this discussion with Adam, and it makes sense. You know, if you put seating there, people are going to sit in it. If they're sitting there, they've probably bought, purchased food and they've most likely taken a car there. So it does make sense that if, you know, even if we're adding seating on the street side, that's, you know, just to try to create a pedestrian hub, that we have to be able to support it on the parking side. So if we leave the building where it is, we would probably ask for a waiver on parking so that we could add seating. If we bring the building forward, we can add the parking because now the buildings move forward. We probably wouldn't need the waiver on the parking, but we would need the waiver on the setback. So it's, it's kind of, you know, kind of a loop there as to which, which waiver would be better. But I think it really does affect the design and, you know, from, from the board's standpoint, I think it'd be great to, to see what the board is more comfortable with, you know, having it more in line with the rest of the buildings on Main Street, especially its two butters. We would still absolutely engage, you know, the whole point of the project is to engage people and engage the street and create, you know, some life and public activity. So moving the building forward is not going to delete that. It'll actually allow us to make it a little smaller, but for us to actually add useful seating and benches. So are there other comments from the board on this because I think it's an important point?
Can I just ask, looking at those two buildings, what is the actual footage from the front of the building to the rear of those two buildings?
Oh, Paul. I know how big they are. They're, the footprint's about 40, 4,600 square feet between the two buildings on the first floor. So it's a little over 9,000 square feet, two stories. Overall depth...
Jeremy, between these two lines is 30 feet, right?
Uh, yes. There you go. So it's probably 90 feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mary Ann, did you have a, oh, sorry, David, you had a question?
That's that conforming setback.
Really not a question, Jeremy. When you think about retail space and all-night vending machines, it's kind of exciting to think that the automaton is coming back to New London.
The what? Yeah. It's coming back to New London?
I love it.
The, just to clarify, the only part of the building that would be open past operating hours would be that back space where the vending machines are. And the other reason we put it at the back of the building is that's where the parking is. So we figured if, if police or somebody that's, you know, running a plow, anything that's off-hours, they would probably go to the parking lot anyway. But it's still accessible between the two buildings because it's an open courtyard. So again, if it were, you know, an ambulance or somebody coming through New London in the off-hours and they wanted to grab a coffee, they're able to, you know, where, there's five spaces that are across the front there that they could also park in, and the off-hours that I'm sure aren't going to be full.
In the vein of the 20...
Go ahead.
In the vein of the 24 hours, you know, I think we just want to make sure that we're really sensitive to the fact that there is a, an inn next door, that there will be people sleeping. You know, and I think other than the hospital, this is probably our only 20, other than the hospital and the PD, I guess, would be probably our only 24-hour establishments. So I think to the extent that, you know, you can really make sure that the, the lighting is screened and that there's, you know, minimum noise for people going in and out, you know, at all hours of the night.
We brought paper copies that we can hand out of the site plan to everybody, and on that, there's a breakdown. So really, what we're proposing meets all of New London's regulations. All the lighting would be full cutoff. It would go down to security level only at 10:00 or 11:00 PM when the buildings themselves close down. Site lighting is very minimal per se, so it would be more the parking lot lighting. So I think in most cases, we'd be able to deal with all stormwater on-site. The idea is that all the paving that's out front on the street side is actually permeable. So we'd be taking care of, of stormwater runoff better than it is now, even though it's all grass, because we'd be infiltrating it into, into, you know, storage, subsurface storage.
And then the only other comment, I guess, well, there's several others, but the only other I mentioned now, just the stage. I mean, I think our experience through the PC's Pavilion site plan was that live music is a somewhat sensitive topic when it's outside and, and the noise traveling. So I think defining that use, you know, so that there was an understanding as far as, you know, hours and is it going to be live music? Is it going to be, you know, little theater productions? You know, what, what is it going to be used for? And what parameters are going to be around that so we can provide the, you know, the residential neighbors some...
So that was, that was one question and one thing you didn't touch on is, so it's one owner of a building, multiple tenants. We would have portions of the building that would have its own hours of operation, other portions that wouldn't, that would be more under the, the building owner as opposed to the tenants. And then alcohol. How would that work? Would that be by vendor or is it by property?
So this would be a question for the police chief because the, the liquor licenses, I believe, go through the select board and the police chief. Is that right? No? You don't?
Not the select.
Oh, I thought you had to sign off on them.
No. No, actually, it's the state.
But, but locally, we have to sign the liquor licenses too.
I don't know about that, but I know that if they want liquor licenses, they have to go through the state. But also, my concern is, and apparently you haven't talked to Chief Cobb yet.
Nope.
I'm worried about what, whether this will be a headache for our police department to have a building that has 24-hour access. I don't know. I just think that that's a concern.
Paul?
On, on the liquor license, I had another comment, but on the liquor license, my experience is that they are site-based. I mean, there's...
That was our thought, too.
It's really the problem, you know, unless you have some kind of joint agreement somehow, which is very hard.
And I think there has to be containment.
That's what I, I was trying to say.
Yeah. So our thought is, is it's under the area with the pergola because it has very defined entrances.
Yeah, but it's the owner...
Of the building.
License owner.
Property.
You can't have people going in and out with a drink and...
Yep.
Jeremy, you asked for feedback, and I just, you know, my feedback is I spent much too much time with you on the master plan. And, and this is what we were discussing and we were, you know, in favor of in, and I think you have, you have a situation here with, you know, design something from my standpoint that makes sense. I never did think, although your example in the book was a blank wall, you know, like Woodstock, I think this is a unique example of a place where you can integrate some green grass and, I mean, it, it more is distinctive to the, to the type of business. But I, I would not personally be hung up about the 30 feet.
Thanks. Mary Ann?
I, excuse me, I echo that. I don't think the 30 feet is essential, and I would be willing to endorse something that moves a little bit further. Speaking from a marketing point of view, if it were a little closer to the street, I think you might have more foot traffic. You might, it might be more obviously a retail establishment rather than being further back. It could look like the town park, which has its own appeal. However, I don't think it has as much retail appeal, and I think it would affect your revenues. I feel strongly about that. And so therefore, I would heartily endorse your idea of moving it forward. The one question I have, and I'm not sure I understand all this, is you would have two entrances to the parking back there? You'd have one from Pleasant Street that cuts behind Bar Harbor. Excuse me, and then, my middle name's Grace, right? And then the other one would be coming from Gould Road.
Potentially. So we, we drew it with both entrances at this point in time. I think it could function with only one entrance and either or, but as Adam pointed out, Gould is smaller. You're coming off of Main Street onto Ple, onto Pleasant, then onto Gould to get into the parking lot. So it, that poses its sort of own challenges that the idea was to not have the Main Street entrance that the old building had.
Yes.
Is to get rid of that.
Yeah.
And by doing that, then you don't have a 20-foot or 24-foot swath between...
Right.
The buildings to get into a parking lot that's behind the building.
Right.
Because that's actually what's kind of wrong with the ordinance and a bunch of properties that are here.
Right.
So I think if we could maintain the Pleasant and get rid of the Gould, if we were able to go through the process of, you know, an easement...
Finagling, figuring it out.
Yeah. And it would really come down to, to the parking count total of what the existing Bar Harbor Bank has or needs. And then I think the rest of that's just sort of lawyer, legal work.
Yeah, I would be very concerned about entering on Gould. Right now, when people drive on Gould, sometimes, you know, there, there's no speeding limit sign on Gould, and people just, you know, really drive very quickly on there. And then, as Adam mentioned, there are a trem, I mean, the parents line up all the way to the college...
Right.
From the school. So it's just an accident waiting to happen, I think.
Agreed. Adam?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, and Jeremy and I have talked about this, that, you know, I think a traffic study in this area will be important, knowing that the intersection of Pleasant, South Pleasant, and Main Street is already a difficult intersection. And so just wanting to make sure that, you know, funneling a higher volume use through there to get there, you know, that whole sort of corner of Main Street, we'll just want to make sure that the design and the layout is such that it, it can, you know, not make the problem worse. You know, at the very least, it may not solve the problem. You know, I think we've got some bigger issues there long-term, but just hoping that it doesn't make it any worse.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
I have one more question related to that. Essentially, at that intersection, you've got five different feeder spaces, you know, feeder lines. You've got Pleasant Street, you've got front, you know, south and north or whatever they're called. You've got Main Street, and then you've got this parking area in front of the bank, and someone can come out from the bank and completely screw up the works at that intersection because you've got two lines of traffic when people traversing that intersection or coming from the other direction on Main Street are only expecting one. It's just, it's very, very dangerous. So, yeah, that's, it's between your rock and a hard place, I think, Jeremy.
Other comments from the board?
I, from, I think I kind of said this before, but I'm in favor of pulling the building forward as well. And I think we've had this discussion before with the master plan, you know, it's kind of a traffic calming measure as well because just like your building and Tucker's across the street, people say that's the narrow part of Main Street, but it's really not any more narrow. It just feels narrow because the activity's close to the street. So it, it helps with that slowdown. And as, the green space would be great, but it's, you know, we're right near the, the green, so it's not like you're in need of that. So having a little bit of it, losing some would make sense in my mind, especially if you can then have seating out there.
Agreed. Anyone from the public? It's conceptual, but anybody want to weigh in? Can you come up?
My name's Pam Perkins, and I think that our master plan calls for, or... My name's Pam Perkins and I think that our master plan calls for, or has an aspiration to have more walkable, more walkability in the village. And this would be a wonderful destination to walk to. I could see the Colby students loving it and walking down and even perhaps elementary kids.
Ice cream vending machine, why not, right?
That was one of the comments from the, from the person looking to develop this is that it's actually the hub of all the, you know, you get, it's within walking for college. The school kids have a place to go to go get snacks, you know. So it really is kind of the perfect location. And it's not too far out of, you know, what's kind of considered the prime downtown.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting.
And the only other thing I was going to mention, which I know we haven't gotten into engineering yet, snow storage seems like it may be a little tight in there. So, you know, we do have the ability to utilize removal contracts too. So just to sort of keep that in mind, you know, long, narrow sites don't always...
Yeah, they're, they're marked in there, but there, no calculations were done yet. It's just we found areas. So on the downhill side on Gould is a bioretention area. So it's, you know, more of a rain garden, so it's all low plantings. That snow can get dumped on in the wintertime. So there are, there are some fairly large spaces where we can, we can pile up snow.
And then here looks like some too.
Thanks, Jeremy. And the idea also is to add vegetation to what isn't there.
Yes, a sea of parking.
So vegetating between the buildings that are on Pleasant and the parking lot. The inside is actually pretty dense, so we really wouldn't need to add a lot there. Oh, so that was another one. The parking lot that's there now, from what we can see, is in the setbacks. And to get this parking lot to work, we would need to be pretty much the same width or maybe even a little bit wider. So that would be both a waiver and a variance.
Let me review the driveway regulations. They may supersede and there's no setback in the commercial zone for driveways. So you and I can sort of take a look at that and take a look at the existing pavement area.
Right now, we're doing this from satellite...
Right, right. You never know how things skew a little bit, so we can sort of...
Once we have a survey, we'll know, you know, exactly what's there for parking now. But it basically is almost parking from property line to property line.
Right. Which obviously, we have examples of where parking lots transcend property lines. So...
One thing that would change is, and, you know, and I don't know if this falls into the waiver side more than if we had to go to zoning, but, you know, we're adding green space and trees in the middle where as it's existing now, it isn't. It's, you know, property line to property line, open paving. So, you know, where we're maybe not meeting the ten feet of green open space on each property line, we're adding quite a substantial amount in the middle. And given that the inside is a small forest, it probably doesn't matter too much on that side.
Jeremy, do you contemplate restricted parking? I mean, signs saying you can only park here if you're going to?
Oh, no, probably not. That would be a lot of signs. So the only, the only parking that's designated is ADA parking, so that's it. So, and we're able to meet that, I think it's between twenty-five and fifty spaces. You need two ADA accessible spots and we have that. And actually, we'll be able to move them closer to the building if we move the building forward because right now, they're the two spots that are in the middle median. Those are the closest we can get to the building. If, if we move the building forward, we're actually gonna be able to add parking to the other side and the ADA spaces, the accessible spaces would be, you know, immediately adjacent to the building, which would be much better.
Did I understand you to say that you would not restrict the parking?
No, so we wouldn't put up signs that said, you know, parking for X, Y, Z only.
I have a feeling it's gonna turn into municipal parking, Jeremy, if I look around.
Well, there's one across the street that's never full, so...
Okay.
Says our, says our parking studies, our traffic studies. So it is, it is also across the street from our current municipal, so that's helpful too.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
So just a reminder to folks, we will not meet again before voting day. So don't forget that your zoning amendments are on the ballot on the fourteenth. So make sure you, you know, show up and make your voices heard on the zoning amendments. And then town meeting is the following night, the fifteenth, at the gymnasium at the school. And then we don't meet our first time in March because of that.
Yep, our next meeting is not until the twenty-eighth. Any, did you have a question, Mary Ann? Okay. All we need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Great, all in favor? Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming. And safe travels home.